All right, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Needles and the Public Utility Authority. April 27th, we're gonna go into a council executive session. You recall this meeting order when you take the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Terrell.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
William.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Any public comments pertaining to the executive session item? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the executive session. There's one item, NPWA Conference with the Real Property Negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Agency Negotiator City Manager Rick Daniels or his designee negotiating parties. Are the Needles Public Utility Authority as a potential seller and Tim Bixith as a potential buyer of the described property as 627 acres, .81 acres of vacant land generally located in the southeast section of East Wentay, wait, Coyote Valley Access Road and Goff's Road near Arrowhead Junction, APN 6 get a permit.
It would be.
9-0000 under negotiation or pricing terms. Sorry, with that, we'll go into executive session. All right, welcome everybody. Sorry for the delay. We're back to the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Needles, California Needles Public Utility Authority, Tuesday, April 27th. The public may also attend via Teams meetings and may submit any comments prior to the meeting. We're gonna call this meeting to order and the roll call's already been taken. Can you give the executive session report, John?
Yes, the council met and closed session on item A, NPWA Conference with Real Property Negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Agency Negotiator City Manager Rick Daniels or his designee. The negotiating parties were the city of the Needles Public Utility Authority as a potential seller and Tim Blixith as potential buyer of the property described as 627.81 acres of vacant land generally located at the southeast corner of East Paiute Valley Access Road and Goff's Road near Arrowhead Junction, APN 659081290000. Under negotiation were price and terms. There was no reportable action taken in close.
Metal buildings?
There's a report out from closed session.
Thank you. Would you please rise with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance? Your Lord, thank you for letting us gather and take care of the city's business. Please let us keep you in our thoughts and our prayers and help us to move the city forward and make the correct decisions for everybody in the city. I love you, Lord. That's just in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ready, begin.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull off item five off consent. Item six off consent and item 12 off consent.
With those.
And 14.
No, not gonna pull 14.
Oh, right. Correct.
Five. Pull five, six, 12.
Right.
Not four? I thought you said four, sorry.
No, just five.
Five, six and 12.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
You still.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any conflicts of interest on this agenda? Any correspondence?
No, your honor.
All right. As a courtesy of those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned to their silent mode, please. And with that, we're gonna take item number 18 first, discussion to reopen meetings to the public subject to attendees wearing masks and seeing no closer than six feet. We want to reopen our meetings to put people back in the seats that want to come. And we have people out there waiting, so we need to motion and.
I'm moved.
Whatever you want to do.
Go ahead. I'm moved to approve.
I'll second that. We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
John, we're requiring the public to wear masks. Do we need to wear them?
If you're, if you're, well, you look like you're closed in others, so yes, you should wear masks.
Under CDC rules, isn't it three feet indoors now?
Have the vaccine.
Students are three feet.
I am vaccinated, but.
There was actually a list.
Replacements.
Today.
Color code, a little smiley faces with the mask on it.
Exactly.
Did I say that?
Every other chair but you two can sit together.
You have to sit on his lap.
You're allowed to exercise together because you're in the same house. Came out here.
All right. Public appearances persons wish to address City Council subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to check the timely meeting, a three-minute time per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18, amendments to the California Government Code Section 5495 Zebra prohibits City Council taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda.
Hello. Hello, my name is Sarah Johnston and I want to talk about the parks to get them better.
In the story.
Better park for all the.
It's a two-part. We have the lease agreement.
And I want to do the help is to do penny panties for the playgrounds so we can check them every week and see how much we get. Or we can do other resources. We can do garage sales or lemonade sales or go talk to the schools and help. And because I think the schools would like to have better playgrounds too for their, for their children's, for their children's that go there and do school. And it would be nice if we could have some help and some fundraisers. Does anybody else have any more ideas? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can we issue her a permit for her lemonade stand?
Come on, Jared. I just wonder if I can still play on them if we do it for the kids.
Jared Johnson, 1320 Santa Fe Circle. Beautiful weekend, beautiful days. Went down to First Beach, Second Beach with the girls. Have a lot of weeds coming off the bridge, making that first left going down. A lot of the trees are overgrown and encroaching on the right away. A lot of the bigger boats are just driving down the center to avoid hitting the trees that are overgrowing on both sides. So right aways need some attention there. Also on Bridge Road, when you make a right past the Trust Company going down to the Little League Field, been doing that a lot. A lot of those are overgrown into the roadway. More importantly, we went down to First Beach and I wouldn't say I was surprised, but I was kind of upset that we got down there, went down the stairs, went down to the beach and there was probably 30 Corona bottles and a whole bunch of trash, just McDonald's trash floating in the water, a lot of glass down there. Fortunately, I saw Adrian making his rounds, so I stopped him in the city vehicle. He didn't have any bags with him, but he did go and get me a bag, so I'm appreciative of him for doing that. Got it all picked up. Went walking down the beach and noticed that somebody had broken a whole bunch of Corona bottles and a whole bunch of glass all over the beach. So I don't know if during the weekend or during high traffic times, if we could have Dennis or whoever and maybe sweep that and just check it or maybe clean it more often during the weekends. I notice that's when the high traffic uses, that's when a lot of people are down to partying. And maybe some kind of, if we don't have it, no glass ordinance for a beach. I know that's gonna be hard to enforce, but I mean, at least if it's there, it can be enforced. Last thing we want is people going down and avoiding our beaches because they're full of glass. I don't know how or what attachments we have for small tractors or quads or the gators that could sift that sand maybe and make it easier. But yeah, I was pretty upset about that.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Any further public appearance?
Your Honor, I just wanted to circle back on the question that was asked about whether we're masked and you, I think you mentioned, your honor, that you saw the CDC guidelines that came out today, the chart, the choosing safer activities chart. And just to respond to the question that was presented, the CDC guidelines or recommendations for wholly vaccinated people are that they wear masks for all indoor activities. So just responding to the question.
Okay, thank you. And I think we should do as the president did and everybody on the Zoom should be wearing a mask even though you're on Zoom.
John, where's your mask?
Thank you, John. Appreciated. All right. Number one is presentation to John Thomas on his retirement and in recognition of his 18 years of service to the City of Needles. Yeah.
Come on, John. Do you have someone to take his picture?
This for John Thomas, the Materials Coordinator, Service Tech. Your dedication for over your 18 years of public.
One to me because it just reminds us we're looking at for these three months about 2.5.
April 21st, 2003, May 2nd, 2021. Excellent. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I know that John has the world's best barbecue. That's what staff bought it, so.
Nice.
Won't tell us where he lives.
You need to know that we had to all but drag him here. John's a very humble public servant.
Thank you, John.
I remember when we got him on, we put him on. It was a good hire. Thank you, John.
You're old.
Okay. Number two is a public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against amending the Needles Municipal Code Section 99.02 Building Materials to allow the permitting of structures with a steel exterior to be streamlined, to be a streamlined entitlement process and be permitted through a site plan review. Staff report.
There we go. Honorable Mayor and Council members in front of you, we have ordinance 637 AC regarding building materials to be streamlined during the entitlement process. Today's April 27th. Again, we got the ordinance in front of you. That's gonna be talked about tonight. Little bit of background, the City Council adopted a goal to streamline development here in the city. One way to streamline development is to make the process less rigorous for individuals and take them through a faster administrative process. So the use of steel construction materials for both residential and commercial buildings currently required to, depending if it's a residential, it's a special use permit, or if it's a commercial building, it's required for a conditional use permit entitlement. So it goes through the process, it goes through the entitlement process and the individual goes to the building side to get built. And so the use of steel structures is recognized as being more affordable and basically we're seeing more developers come forward with us to to put steel structures in the back of their garages, sheds, those types of materials. But the way it's set up today, if it's more than 200 square feet, you're required to come get a conditional use permit or a special use permit for residential structure. So the city's project review process already has a site plan that's embedded in it. When we have a zoning permit, an individual comes to us and says we want to have something built, we already have that embedded. And we look at Jason size, we look at the building materials, we look at the colors. Obviously, there's a 25% architectural enhancement. That's the process that we currently go for for special use permits and conditional use permits. So looking at the code, we're recommending to update it that the building materials are permitted outright except for the Municipal Code Section 9601 table permissible uses. So what that means is if a project comes forward and they need a CUP because of the project, like cannabis, they're required to get a CUP because it's part of a conditional use permit entitlement in order to have that business. So that wouldn't stop those types of businesses to come in front of you. So if it says on the permissible use table that needs a conditional use permit, like a boat storage or something like that, they're gonna, that's a special use permit. They would have to come forward and take care of that. But the exemptions, so would be approved for the entitlement, but it wouldn't be approved for shipping containers. You'd still need a zoning permit. Fencing would be removed, the construction project, special use permit, conditional use permit requirements. And then the ones that are exempt are the storage sheds, as I had mentioned earlier. And then, you know, to stop the screening of devices, not utilizing galvanized interlocking metals and things of that nature. So at the hearing that was held April 7th at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to maintain the current process, recommending that the process stay status quo as is. And it was discussed to continue, they want to include the public comment, the input. They believe that this process allows that to occur. The projects will proliferate and it'll get out of control if they come into the administrative process. Problem with applicants not pulling permits, requiring permits and things of that nature, they believe that would perpetuate and create more. And they believe that they serve as an important role in reviewing and making recommendations on the projects to the City Council prior to their review and approval. So it's staff's recommendation that we approve ordinance 637 amending Needles Municipal Code Section 99.02 regarding the building materials to allow permitting and structures with steel exteriors to be streamlined. Again, we want to coincide with the goals that the council's put in front of us. And that's why you're seeing this in front of you today. So if you've got any questions, I am now ready for any.
Any questions from Council on?
I think my thought, I mean, if the Planning Commission still feels that this needs to be done, I mean, I'm, I kind of understand, I mean, especially if each one is, gets some changes done to it. I don't know. I'm, I like to make things faster, but I mean, they're all unanimously voted. They think we still need to be doing this. I kind of.
Find it, bring it back to you.
Down their thoughts on that.
Damn.
Yeah, I actually don't have a problem with it in residential only. Any commercial, I think it should still go in front of Planning Commission.
To design it or to?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with the metal buildings in a residential setting. As far as somebody wanting to build one as their back garage or anything like that or a work shed or something, I mean, there's a lot of them out there. I see commercials for them all the time. I've even considered them myself. As far as commercial goes, I think it should still go before the Planning Commission because unless it's an existing building, it should have some architectural done to it and stuff like that. But if I'm gonna put one in my backyard, I don't want to be told how many extra trees I gotta plant or what color I can make it. Because I might pick a color that some people don't like, but maybe I'm planning on choosing, you know, repainting my house to match it later. But I, like I said, for a residential, I'm for it. For a commercial, I'm thinking it should stay with Planning Commission. Thank you.
I agree with Tim. Any other comments or questions? And Council, Ellen?
That, that is what this is saying, right? That we are, we would like to separate the commercial from the residential.
Yes.
So that the, the commercial ones will still go through the Planning Commission. And the residential ones still have to pull plans, they have to, they have to submit plans, they have to show everything that they're going to do. And get permits for all of it. So unless you're going to build the Winchester House on Broadway, I don't, I think I am, I'm okay with it.
Tana said almost exactly what I was thinking. I think that, that it, I'm always in favor of streamlining, like that is my favorite thing in the world is to streamline every process. But I've, a lot of people in the public and then also based on public people coming up and talking to me about this issue and then also what the Planning Commission says, I think that we should keep, keep it the same.
All right. We will open for public comment. Are there any public comments on this item? Linda, you on the line? She's not, Barbara. You want to go ahead and go?
Okay, well, I'm kind of a PS to Linda, so I will wing it here. I agree that whatever we do in the city needs to move more quickly. I just had oral surgery. I apologize. I'm having a little difficulty speaking, but it's better than my showing up and scaring you all to death with black eyes. Okay, so I believe that we possibly have other problems within the city in generating permits other than streamlining to eliminate attending Planning Commission meetings. I think people are more comfortable in Planning Commission. It's more informal. There is no city attorney there. It's not quite as. Quality, let's say we're more like meeting like in a living room situation and they just find it easier to talk to us. There are national area, this has food, which I'm sorry to see, but we don't have that many items on the agenda usually. I've asked several times about why there are either no agenda items or only one or two. And the response I get is that there is nothing pending. So whatever it is going on inside the city, I don't think this is the answer to streamlining. I work in offices for 50 years and actually more than that. And I, that's just my feeling based on my experience. And also as far as removing some of the development processes from the public eye and getting them to the city, you give the city and in some instances only one or two people more control in the subjective decision-making. The public doesn't discover the results of that decision unless, unless, until the work's completed and it's too late at that point to do anything about it or object at the city level. By scheduling the application for an open forum for.
In order to get people to come here.
There is opportunity for contributions and oftentimes they bring, people bring a lot of wisdom into the meeting. The needs and desires of the residents can often sway decision-making at the Planning Commission level. And as a result of the contributions that they can make, I don't think they're quite as anxious to go in front of City Council. And we are, we have never been too busy to hold a special meeting on the fly wherever Cindy has wanted. We're always available for an unscheduled meeting, so that is not an excuse not to apply for a permit. And then you still have, at City Council, you still have the ability to change whatever decisions we make. So you're not stuck with anything you don't agree with what we're recommending. And.
It'll make the beach cleaner.
I was going to talk about steel, the steel structures themselves. The only concern I have is my main concern, let's put it, is that they draw heat. And that's what I've been told. And I would hate to have somebody put a big metal garage right next to my property line. So if, I don't know if that's true or not. So my concern is insulation. And I don't know what the building department requires when we erect one, so I'm talking out of school here. But I would be concerned about the steel building process. I think we, I think when Joe Payson that steel around Hardware Express, there were some residents that highly objected to that. I think that's when we got started on steel buildings, but I'm not sure. So it was, it's, a lot of people don't like steel buildings and.
We end up doing.
I don't care unless there's one right next to me. So and my question, I think I heard the council members already mention it. I missed it in the resolution. Are we going to permit new houses or home additions like bedrooms and bathrooms to be built out of steel without permits also? And if if that's been part of the resolution, then I think we need to consider that. An ADU conceivably could be built out of steel if not. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any further public input? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring you back to the council for discussion deliberation.
I just think that when we have commissions or other things like the planning commission, they make a recommendation that we all listen to it.
I kind of just, I think that the housing is kind of an important deal. I mean, I don't want my neighbor putting up a big purple steel building in their backyard. I don't, I don't think that that's going to add value to my home or my eyesight. So I think it's kind of good to go before to make a decision. I mean, I get we live in a world of rules, but there's reason why you live within city limits to have some rules, so. I think it needs to go before.
Your Honor.
Zach, use your mic, please.
Your Honor, I, as much as I don't want anyone building a giant purple building next to my house either, we're not an HOA.
That's what I was gonna say.
I, I, I can't tell a person what color to paint their building or their house. If, if, if I want my house to be purple, I'm painting it purple. It's my house. Now, now with that being said, I unfortunately missed our, our goal, our goal meeting. But if it was to streamline these things, then we want it faster, correct? Isn't that what y'all asked for at the meeting? Well, the, the city provided a faster way to do this, so. You know, and I love what Doc said. We do set up these boards to listen to what they present to us. Otherwise, we'd be in here a lot more than just every other Tuesday. This is a rough little vote right here, guys. But I'm, I'm not an HOA and if you come tell me how to paint my house, I, I've got a couple of choice gestures, you know, so.
Your Honor, I'm, I thought I had this under control in my head, but now I'm really confused. But what I want to ask is, okay, we want to streamline this, which is just removing one process. But I did not, unless I'm missing something or I'm really confused, I didn't think this had anything to do with what color you are painting something. But whether or not we were going to have the Planning Commission and whether or not we are going to abide by what the city, whatever the city codes are for what we build, would that change anything? I mean, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the Planning Commission. Okay, so that's, you know, that's probably the problem here is I don't know everything that they do. I should probably go to their meeting.
Yeah, in response, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Counselor Campbell. Right now, the city has no color palette that. So you're free to express yourself in the color of a house. The only thing that is regulated is the, well, not the only thing, but in this case, it's the building outside materials. In response to another question, there is the insulation requirements are the same whether stick built or metal. You have to achieve a certain insulation factor. This would make it an administrative item if you wanted to. But in order to be administrated, it needs to be. It needs to be A bunch of binary questions such as does it need the setbacks? Yes, no. Does it? Is there a foundation? Yes, no. Is there Building permit, all those kind of things. And is there architectural treatment? You can say you can carry forward and make the administrative any administrative decision require the twenty five percent architectural treatment, which is what we've been Traditionally approved of buildings, whether they go to the city council or planning commission. And to their credit, the planning commission has met whenever a special meeting is called, so they're very willing to Get on a regular basis, but it would speed up one of the permits that are issued. And that is the use of metal buildings.
So let me ask you a question. If I'm going to build a garage at my house, stick built, I just come down and get a building permit and build?
Yes, sir.
So if I want to build out of metal, now I've got to go through the planning commission, you come to the city council and get a permit?
It would be just just the planning commission, but
Just the planning commission for the garage?
For a special use permit.
Okay, so we're eliminating that one step.
Yes, sir.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Tim.
If you wanted to build that garage And instead of putting wood on the outside, it'd still be a wood structure, but you want to put metal on the outside of it instead of wood? You got to go to the planning commission right now.
Done as rapidly as possible.
When this all came up, I called a couple of these places and got brochures. They're pre-engineered. They're set up to withstand X amount of hurricane winds. They come in several pre-made colors.
Washington.
You're not going to order one that's pink unless you paint it yourself to upset your neighbors. But if you live in a house, you could do that now. But There are still permits required. There are still inspections required. They come, the plans come with a step by step with engineer stamps on them. You can build it yourself. You can hire them out to be built. So that's my only reason for The the as far as from what I asked Rick the other day, the planning commission hasn't turned one down yet, but they always have a few guidelines That they say, oh, you need to do this, or you need to do that, and you need to do this. The guidelines that they've always set have never been outrageous. I just don't know why sometimes and in some cases. You have to wait a while to get in front of planning commission. I don't know. Maybe they won't meet for one item, or maybe whoever sets them up won't meet for one item. So It would just speed up the process. On things that are going to get built anyway, just take one step out of it. And like I said, I'm not looking for removing commercial at all. Just residential. And right now, as your neighbor, I could build any garage I want and paint it any color I want, as long as I don't put metal on it. Which, by the way, I'm not going to build any of them.
Ellen.
Your honor, do we have people beating down our door to build metal buildings?
I mean, is it? Someone answer that question?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Campbell, the there are, Patrick, do you have a number? Probably four On residential, maybe two or three a year.
Oh.
Commercial, well, as many cannabis buildings have been built. That's different. They'll continue to go through the standard conduct from these permit process.
Yeah, no, I'd echo that. So you make so the homeowners that come to us that want to build these have been more than four or five a year, three to four. I mean, so it's it is minimal, but the they are, you know, the Joe Schmo's coming forward saying, you know, hey, I want to build this 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 structure in my backyard. And they have to go through that. They have to learn the
Us to put
Take them through the whole, which we're really good at doing.
Can I ask a question? How much time will we save for them? I mean, what's the can you give me a ballpark? I'm just I'm sorry. I'm just trying to understand what I'm going to vote on.
Probably two to four weeks.
What? What do most cities do in California?
I don't have that answer. I'm sorry.
So this was probably about forward in front of the planning commission with bad timing since we had one person in probably the last ten years that built A metal garage without a permit, without anything from the city. And he had to come in front of the planning commission and beg for forgiveness and then move this forward.
Yeah.
That where this is coming about?
Next meeting.
Is it?
Yeah, he's appealed that decision.
So That's unfortunate, but I appreciate you getting it on as quick as you did for us to review this and with the planning commission. So is there any more discussion? We need a motion.
Can I make motion leave status quo?
Sorry?
Can I leave status quo?
You want to?
Instead?
Was that a motion? I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion just to leave it alone. And a second, any further discussion? If this fails, we can have another motion. Call for the vote.
My button don't work.
You only get one vote.
It doesn't work, so I feel empowered.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
No.
Barrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
No.
All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Wait a minute, how many votes were?
Two no's and four yeses.
Go pass it.
That's what I had. Public comment pertaining to the consent counter.
Cherry Street?
Has been established. Is there any public comment? Consent counts all matters listed on consent count are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one vote Or one motion to form list to the mayor, any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent counter for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent account three minute time. Her person apply the recommended actions approve items three through fourteen on the consent counter excluding five. Six and twelve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Five, six, twelve?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Five is Congressman Obernolte, fiscal year twenty twenty-two designated infrastructure project submission. Rick?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Congressman Jay Obernolte requested A couple of weeks ago on, I believe it was a Friday, that we submit any projects that we want included within the Infrastructure bill that's currently under consideration by the By Congress. Apparently, they're going to go back to earmarks Where a congressman or senator, a congressman, congresswoman, senator can Identify specific projects that money would be dedicated to. And there is some assurance that the Sponsored projects will be included. So we first of all identified that we would want to do the next Three years of of our street paving program In that list under streets. And then on utilities, we submitted the new well That we're working on. If we can get a grant for that well, we wouldn't have to use ratepayers money. Same thing with the well reservoir. If we could get That as a project, the way we wouldn't have to use ratepayers money would be ahead. And then there's manhole replacements. And there's a section of fifteen blocks down on Front Street That the sewer pipe that was put in initially can't handle any effluent that's coming from North Needles. So that's going to need to be upgraded, or we'd have to build another fourteen million dollar wastewater treatment plant. We also looked at the three parks projects that council had earlier approved submitting for state funding. We include Duke Watkins, Jack Smith, and Aquatic Center. And then we also suggested two point two million towards the El Garsas. And there's nothing that says these are the only ones, so if council wants us to submit any other projects, it'd be glad to. But we gave him twenty million dollars a project just for needles. And the belief is that each congressperson will be able to each member of Congress will be able to earmark twenty million for their district. So if you don't ask, you don't get. So we loaded them up and gave them all kinds of options. That's all I have to report.
That was an information item. If you have anything else you'd like to add to that list, get it to Rick. Their staff did a good job, I think, on putting that list together so quickly.
And that's
Number six, weigh the reading and adopt resolution number twenty Twenty-one dash twenty-two approving the visitor's center professional service agreement with the Chamber of Commerce As a preferred vendor for the city of Needles Visitor Center and lease agreement with the Chamber of Commerce In the historic El Garsas Train Depot for the Chamber of Commerce offices. It's a two-part. We have the lease agreement and the services agreement. You want to give a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, approximately a year ago or more, the city began a process to Cause the creation of a visitor's center to In to reinforce business marketing efforts for our travel industry businesses in town. We cut out an R F P. We selected a preferred vendors. We organized, you organized a council committee, and I'll leave their report to you. They met three or four times And have come to a conclusion on a lease. Two things. First is the lease for the chamber office. So there there's some of the space that they are going to lease from us to from the city to operate the chamber office in the El Garsas. The second document is a professional services agreement between the chamber and the city whereby the city provides them Two thousand dollars a month to operate a visitor's center to assist our travel industry businesses. And I'll leave it to the committee who was Kirsten, Tana, and Jeff to give you the rest, but the 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 contract's been modified even after yesterday, and we are all, I believe, in agreement, but I'll leave that to the committee.
Tana?
This has been the project going on for about good five years here now, and this is amazing. We're finally about sixty days out from actual groundbreaking is what this contract is stating and to be done by December thirty first. So this to me is a great achievement. I mean, we'll finally get a visitor's center there and then hopefully again eventually be able to actually get in and apply for our California Welcome Center again. But this gets us started with the chamber managing our actual visitor's center, and hopefully we can be able to get buses and tours and increase our Visitors into the city of Needles. Cities were tired with the chamber to they've put in a lot of hours to accommodate us on the needs for the council and for the city to help to Be able to reduce their costs and also be able to manage this so we can hopefully help this as a success. So I want to thank the chamber. George is here if he has anything he wants to talk about also, and the city for working this out.
Or send you anything to add? Mr. George?
Okay, I was I was not prepared to talk today, but As Tana mentioned, I am very proud of our achievement. I've been on the board for six years and I've seen it's been going on for a long time. We modified the agreement. We worked with you guys and girls and it's to the best interests of the city and ourselves, and I see this as a win-win. I mentioned to you a couple of months ago that I would not Get involved with a if you set me up to fail type issue, and we're not going to fail. We're going to succeed. We're having our new board members for the chamber will meet next month at Lynn's house when we have installation. And we've got new projects and it's I'm excited. I'm very excited, and so I'm bouncing around a little bit, but I do thank Rick and I do thank the councilmen women that Helped us to make this achievement. That's all I have to say. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, George. Any discussion with the council, Tana?
No, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
No motion to say any further discussion? Call for the vote. We can do both of these at the same time.
I believe so.
Lease agreement out there.
Okay, councilmember Campbell?
Can I yell? Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. The answer is yes, because they're they're part and parcel of one Proposed arrangement with the chamber.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Terrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Merritt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Councilmember Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. So get to building, George. All right, number twelve, weigh the reading and adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three adopting revised statement of policies dated April twenty twenty-one to guide the overall design of electric rates by increasing the power cost adjustment Balancing fund from two hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars. Rick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Needles Public Utility Authority Board Has recommended that the amount of money set aside To levelize any rapid increases in rates be increased from currently two hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars. And let me let me tell you why. I handed out to you this chart earlier this evening. And the chart identifies, and as you know, we buy power from WAPA Three to six months in advance, depending upon the price, whether there's good prices ahead or bad. And here shows During the presidential election, there was a lot of discussion about Green New Deal and moving to green power. And that caused prices to spike. And then the election and inauguration and orders since that time have caused the price to go from Sixty-some dollars per megawatt to two hundred and thirty for on-peak periods. And then on off-peak to go from thirty-five to sixty. But So What we're seeing is that power is going to cost us Much more, so there's a greater room for error. And that the two hundred thousand won't cover that rapid a rapid cost spike. Now, we last time we saw this was when the Enron problem happened twenty years ago. Where at that time, the city actually had to bail out the utility because they didn't have cash flow to cover the rapid increases. This is a fund that was created to avoid or to soften those rapid increases. Now, it is not new money. The utility, Needles Public Utility Authority, has a million dollars in reserve. So it would be merely to dedicate another two hundred thousand of that were reserved to be used for price softly If we see increases. So that would take it from two hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. And that's revisited ever every Every month. So The utilities utility board's recommendation is that you adopt that in the revised statement of policies And that money be reserved to deal with unexpected, unanticipated Rapid increases, significant rapid increases in power costs.
And just to verify, because with this word about the to guide the overall design of electric rates by increasing the power costs, There is no increase in rates or anything else. The matter of moving money from one account to the other.
It's an accounting. It moves it from a general reserve that can be used for anything, capital, whatever, to a restricted account.
Right.
That is just for Rapid increases where we could soften That is just for rapid increases where we could soften those over a two or three-month period or four, whatever.
And we had to make that fun when we got out of the contract with Nevada Power because they started losing money on us. We were getting it for thirty dollars a kilowatt. And they wanted to get out of that contract, so we hadn't to figure out some way to do it without jacking our rates through the roof because at the time it was about two hundred dollars a megawatt. And we were getting it for thirty. So.
Can I re-
Any further discussion, Tana?
No, I just, this was a little bit of mind-blowing to me because it just reminds us that, I mean, we're literally looking at for these three months about two point four million for these three months of power. Our budget last year was two point two million. So these-
The whole year.
The whole year. So we're just, this is drastically increasing with the new administration in place. So I just want to remind people out there, this is why this new deal is going to cost us millions for our little city, billions, trillions for this whole country. So we have to think about these in our decisions on voting because this is going to, I mean, we are softening the blow for now. But I mean, we're seven times the price is going up for us, seven times for power. So this is going to, this is for us to try to ease us into these electric rate increases and hopefully, obviously, the market changes daily. We don't know, but this is just blows my mind, the numbers on this. So just really want to make sure everybody's aware on these prices.
Well, if we have to go green, it's going to stay like this because it's expensive. Any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes.
I need a motion, I guess. Yeah, it's right here.
I'm so shocked.
I've already got a voter next right here to approve.
I'll second it.
A motion to second now, can we have the vote?
Council member, uh, Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the regular items. Discussion, discussion to eliminate the three percent NPUA credit and debit card convenience fee. After that last vote, now I wonder if we shouldn't leave?
Well, uh,
We need to get rid of it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the city, um, has historically been charged, uh, three to four percent, depending upon uh, which bank, uh, for the use of credit cards for people to pay their utility bills. For context, we have three thousand utility customers. And of those three thousand, one hundred sixty-five a month physically come to the office and pay by credit card. There's another forty-five that pay online because at council direction, we made a provision on our website to be able to pay your, uh, utility bill online. So there's about two hundred and ten, uh, people that generate about sixty-five hundred dollars in annual merchant fees that are, we are charged by, uh, by the banks. Last year, we took steps to address that. We, uh, can, our rate base includes any debt payments, any operations and maintenance costs that we have, any capital cost and a prudent reserve we have of, of ten percent. So the bank fees were included within the operations and maintenance fee. So we no longer need to collect the three percent convenience fee. And I've given directive to refund anybody who paid that. Uh, since the new rates went into effect or back to COVID starting. So we're in the process of crediting people's accounts, uh, if they paid a convenience fee for paying by credit card. So our, uh, recommendation is to eliminate the NPUA credit card, you, the debit card, you, convenience fee.
We should make sure that gets in the newspaper about you crediting that back to their accounts. That's, that's-
Kane is listening.
Good PR. Um, any questions?
No, I think that this, Your Honor, I think that this would be a whole lot cheaper than paying someone to credit them back. Just eliminate it completely.
I agree. Any further discussion? Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Your Honor?
A second, whichever motion was made.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the three percent NPUA credit debit card convenience fee. Hooray, citizens.
And I will second that.
Call for the vote?
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
I pick up my rights.
Sixty has provided direction regarding designating First Beach as a city park.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of, uh, the council, at the request of, uh, Councilor Belt, uh, we have, are proposing to revisit the plan that council approved a couple of years ago when the Needles Marina Boat Basin was, uh, excavated to make it function better. And they placed their spoils on the upper reaches of, of First Beach. Uh, and the intent was to build a parking lot in that area because we're short of, short on parking. But, uh, and I'll let Councilor Ba- Belt explain her, her own proposal, but it is basically to take the first, uh, forty, fifty feet from the curb and level that and put grass where the parking was going to go. And then on that grass, put picnic tables and shade structures. And then the parking that was going to go there, we would go down to Manny Morris, which is maybe a hundred and fifty yards closer to Rio Buena Vista, which is about a third parking lot and a third grass and picnic tables and about a third grass. And we would take that grassed area, not by the picnic tables, but, and we would turn that into a parking lot that would have been otherwise here. It's, so it's just a geographic shift in where the grass is and the, uh, the parking will be. Uh, our estimated cost, uh, for the design is approximately nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, we will, uh, we would want to design it, bring it back to you so you could amend this plan for that area with a new plan.
You see, it's nineteen thousand dollars just to design it or to do the work?
No, that, that's, that's-
Total cost.
Just, well, that, it's, it's design and it's just design.
Just design?
And, but we don't have to spend all that. I mean, it's, um, there's admittedly a cushion in there because we don't know, we haven't put it out to RFP yet. But I wanted-
Nineteen thousand just to design it?
Well, I'm, I'm putting in that in there now. And that'll allow us to, uh, specify, well, spec this. And, uh, then we will go out to bid for the designer. And your approval, I mean, let's say it comes back in at five thousand, then you would be asked to approve a contract for the exact amount for the designer. This is admittedly a guess, but it doesn't commit us to spend nineteen thousand dollars. So you would be approving at a later date the cost and who is the designer and more specification on what you want to see in that area.
Well, dang, now I'm nervous, but my thoughts are that that area there is, is a prime area. Yeah, I, First and Second Beach are definitely, along with Jack Smith, some of our best assets. And I just don't think our best idea is to put a parking lot right there. I think if we can utilize that for families to come, there, we have a restaurant, how, whatever, I mean, I hope a restaurant will be there for long term. We have a golf course that are both could be used to actually, people couldn't, hopefully there'll be bike rentals or boat rentals or, I mean, anywhere you go down to beach, beaches, if you've been anywhere where by water, there's usually some type of recreational area. This has food available also and drink so that people would be able to enjoy their time at the river. Um, I think it would be a great idea if we could get that, clean it up to make it look presentable. And then again, we utilize all aspects for the, the restaurant, the golf, and then the beaches there. That's my thoughts.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Um, what Tana just said, this, this is one of our most inviting assets that we have. It's a city of free, beautiful public beaches. Uh, we hired a management team that is going full bore on our golf course. If you haven't been down there, you should. The buildings look beautiful. The grass is starting to look beautiful. They're trimming trees, curb appeal. In, in order to get people to come here, to move here, to build rooftops, you know, to bring businesses, we have to polish our attractive places.
Mm-hmm.
I, if you look at Bullhead, you have Rich River Houses and then a huge community park, then Rich River Houses, and then another community park. This is something we're lacking. Um, I love Tana's idea. I, I'm full bore on this. Um, it's a no-brainer and, uh, it, it'll make the beach cleaner. It, it'll give us time to go down and start on our beaches in Jack Smith, which, uh, everyone here saw this weekend, but we have to deal with there. Um, come enjoy life on the banks of the beautiful Colorado River is what we say. So this is how we do it. And, uh, this will bring more people here. And if it doesn't, well, damn, the locals will have the best beaches in the area.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
How much were we going to pay on the, for a park, uh, picnic table at another park? How much was that?
Well, what we ended, oh, Madam, Mr. Mayor, uh,
I don't know the number.
Up doing on the one at the train park was to order a picnic table that had a straight shade structure built in. And I think it was sixteen, eighteen thousand.
Oh, see, that, that price for designing that park is, you know, it's, it, it sounds terrible. It's not. And I, I agree with both of you. It's, it's like, this is, we're looking at making that a park. We're going forward with putting the lagoon back on the other side. So we're going to have something similar with, with parks in Needles that are attractive for people to come to, even if it's just a stop for the day to have a picnic while they're traveling or check out our town and want to come back another time. Uh, I think that parks, being a mother, you know, ha- having raised all of my children in this town, I think it's imperative that we have parks. And I think it's a fabulous idea.
Any further discussion? Need a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Don't need to push.
Call for the vote?
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Yes, Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, seventeen, assigned council members to the budget committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two budget adult committee. Uh, I've had one volunteer. Mr. Merritt would like to do this. Is there anybody else who would like to be on this budget committee?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I was on it last year. I'll do it again.
How many people can we meet? Are you on it?
Budget committee.
I'll do it again.
Okay.
We have council members Merrill, um, uh, Merritt, Terrell and Belt?
Yes. A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote?
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
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 Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
City attorneys report?
Nothing to report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, John. Will we see you over next meeting?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We're open. I will be there.
Thank you. City managers report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, a, a couple of different things. The road and, uh, the street and, um, waterline, uh, projects progressing. Uh, right now, we're having to schedule, so people can access a baseball game tomorrow. Um, we, uh, they are working on Bailey. Uh, here's some little show and tell. Uh, we did have a, uh, an event out on, uh, the site, uh, for counselors to see, uh, what's being proposed or what's underway. Um, we have a, I believe, a very good contractor, uh, who's very concerned about, um, attention to detail. Uh, and they're taking it all very seriously. Um, I got a question about, uh, I got a question about, uh, why we aren't doing it at night?
People want to sleep?
In the afternoon, um, so as to not disturb as many people. Many of you have worked shift work. There's a, there's a premium to pay for it to be done in the afternoon. Uh, or at night, uh, there are extra, so there's extra labor cost. There are extra, uh, contractors' cost of having to have construction lights out. Uh, so we chose to do it this way to be able to get it done as rapidly as possible. Um, all of the work on the hill, on High School Hill, uh, should be done by next Tuesday. So that means L Street, uh, Washington, Bailey, Aaron and Earl Court. So, uh, we were able to get a four thousand or eleven thousand dollar change order. Uh, can you go back one, Patrick? This is, uh, a trenching. We're putting in all the, replacing all of the service lines on these streets. And so that area where the, the, the tractor tire is, um, initially the specs had that all getting permanent patch. So we made a change to where it's dirt and then it's a, a temporary patch. And the reason I went to temporary was because it's only going to be there a day. So don't put down expensive hard patch when it's only going to be there a day. And I saved us eleven thousand dollars. But, uh, we have a, a very good Q, uh, quality assurance, quality control inspector out there, Mr. Savant. Um, all of the, uh, water and, uh, street people, public works have been out helping. Um, uh, we continue to get, uh, rave reviews on North Needles. I got an unsolicited uh, email from a visitor, uh, going to Laughlin and talking about how grateful she was to be able to drive on that section of North East Highway and keep her kidneys. So, um, it, it, it's, it's going well, uh, and that's, that's it. I, I can, you, you all get the manager's member memo, so, um, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent.
Oh, I also handed out this, uh, dedicate or groundbreaking for the new kindergarten.
Okay. Counsel request. Council member Campbell?
Um, Your Honor, uh, I still, um, have an issue with the person that is feeding the pigeons on C Street across from D Street School. And it's like, it seems like there's five hundred pigeons there. I don't know if there really is, but it's, it's really horrendous around the neighborhood. Um, I had a request from a citizen on B Street, uh, for, uh, us to put sidewalks in between Sebola and Desnok. I would say that's across from Margie Hagstrom's house. There's, there's a home there. They don't have any sidewalks. There's someone there that has difficulty getting, you know, across ground that's not even. Uh, and then there is a situation, we have a house that's on the corner of Downey and B Street that has been uninhabited for twenty-seven years, twenty-seven years, literally boarded up for twenty-seven years. They've done a great job. They fixed it up. There's people living in it. It's wonderful. But I don't know how many of you drive up and down B Street. But between Downey and Sebola, you go up that little hill and come down to turn right to go up to the Katie Hostet school. It is very narrow right there. And at one point a long time ago, the city came in and, you know, they pushed it back and they put railroad ties in there. But now we do have people living in this house and then there's parking and then there's a parking where they park the truck up kind of on that hill. What's happening, and I drive this- What's happening, and I drive this several times a day, is people have to go into head on traffic, it's it's like a one-way road now. To pass through there, so I don't know what the answer is, whether we just don't allow parking and I don't want to, you know, gink chains for the people who live there. But this is a situation and when we do have school coming back, you know, someday, and people driving their kids or kids walking from school. This is a very narrow place with a very steep drop to one side. And people, and I have to go let people pass and not go head on with traffic almost on a daily basis, and I'm not the only one and I'm not the one who brought it up to you. It was someone who brought it up to me, so I'm just passing that on, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Terrell?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilmember Merritt?
Um yeah, I had some members of the public talk to me about um some major potholes that they wanted addressed. The El Monte is the main street that they're concerned with, um El Monte and Peru, the cross street, El Monte and Cardi- Cardiway. And El Monte and Lily Hill. Additionally, there's a really big pothole on Cherry Street. That another member of the public brought to me. Um as I mentioned last time, Bridge Road, those trees and branches um are just overgrown, so it's actually. Kind of a scary situation for people leaving the games at night because it almost is turning into a one-way because they're overgrown on both sides of the street. So that's something that needs to be addressed. And I also wanted to say thank you to the Needles Tourism and Visitor Center and Set Free and all, everybody um. Who was part of the uh Bike Week um this last weekend, we had quite a few people downtown over those three days. And it was a really great success, we had a lot of people coming to the museum. And yeah, and I'm looking forward to also the new visitor center, working with the chamber, I'm really excited about that, so thank you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pageant?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Belt?
I want to thank everybody that came out on Thursday for their cleanup, I mean, multiple staff members out there, every. It was amazing, we did a lot of two truckloads of trash then, I know Zach had already gone out with another crew that we can before and picked up tons of trash also. So with that being said, if we can eventually look into either no glass bottles, I don't know if that'd have to be an ordinance out there, and then um. It's just a reminder, pack in, pack out kind of thing, um so we can, I don't know, if people are going to leave trash, you're going to leave trash, but at least. We can try to persuade them. Second thing, I I mean, I'm still stuck on this signage. That Ellen you had brought up about the uh you don't use it, you lose it sign is to remind people to shop local, use our businesses, I know we have the new. It's not oil lubin latte, but that's that model's stuck in my head, um open, use your, so remember if you want to keep these things open in town, you gotta, you gotta use them. Put some hair on your chest, good stuff. Good stuff, um and also. What was it? But I guess we'll just go with that for now, go ahead, Zach.
Did you uh do your cleanup on First Beach, is that where you guys were at?
No, we did Jack Smith.
Okay.
So that was two truckloads full and I mean, we went back again today and we already picked up another bag. And I picked up a dozen Corona bottles, just glass on the beaches just today, and we just cleaned it up Thursday, so.
The week before, we, I'm gonna, I've never seen so much glass on a beach in my life.
The glass is out of control right now, I mean, there's just, we can't, we don't go in the water without our shoes on because it's just so bad.
Yeah.
And uh so if we can get, be looking to those, or that'd be at least the signage up for them.
Councilmember Longacre?
Uh yes, uh I'd like to put boots on First Beach, get that mesquite tree and those weeds knocked down this week, uh we're looking at a hundred and eight this week and those beaches will be packed.
On First Beach, excuse me?
Yes.
I'll just pick the boots up.
Um also with the trees on those beaches, um we we have a a chain link fences around them to keep the beavers from chewing them down. Um can we chicken wire the top of them so trash can't be dumped in them, I mean, simple solution to a simple problem, right? Something to think about, um as far as the glass issue, why don't we tear the littering? Put no glass on it, but pack it in, pack it signs out with no littering and put the littering fines and put those signs, you know, make five of them, we we don't have five public beaches. Let let's post them up and, you know, I I'm not saying find somebody five hundred dollars for throwing a sandwich wrapper down. But hit him with a twenty dollar, you know? They want to do it five times in a row, hit them with five hundred dollars. Uh we took forty men crews out twice this week. And put a dent in it, a dent. You know, and and a lot of our citizens say we're inviting the people that do it, well. Re- regardless, you know, if we're going to walk past it, are aren't we just as guilty? These are our beaches, you know, that. I I can think of five times as a little kid running across the beach where I had to have my foot taped up because of a glass bottle, it's unnecessary. They make beer in plastic bottles, now if you go to the beach, the liquor stores in Ocean Beach don't sell beers in glass bottles, they're all plastic. So let's definitely get on that, tear the littering fines, get some signs up, make it better, um. Oh, what else, what else, uh I'm going to chop that creosote bush down tomorrow at the skate park. After my ad hoc committee, I I'm I'm getting it and uh. I I just want to make sure staff is uh is on the right path and with the right agencies on our river issue that we came up on Friday. And uh that's all I have, have a good night, folks.
Your Honor, I forgot one thing, uh the ad hoc committee uh for the lagoon is meeting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. Across the river at their center um with uh their representatives and it's just a meet and greet, it's just to. Exchange information, phone numbers and email addresses for us to meet each other and plan um a meeting to get together and and start the process. Whatever the, at the, um I want to say the administration, sorry, it's got a name.
Let me know.
Their Native Resource Center.
Yeah, they're like the resource center, they're big building where they have the offices. On plantation. I know where it is, I'm sorry. I know where it is, I'm sorry.
Where we had the COVID meeting at? I think Patrick went to it. All right, and with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. Good night, John.
Hey, Dan, both of my hair are all bad.